So the first bill up is House File 36, Representative Nor. Unemployment insurance eligibility for secondary students temporarily modified. Representative Nor, would you care to move your bill and present your bill?
Thank you, Chair Mahoney and members. This is a bill that we have talked about it. Before I proceed, I just wanted to know, are we sending this bill to the floor? That's my assumption to the registry.
Well, as we've been told time and again by our speaker that, is there agreement in the Senate on this particular bill?
Mr. Chair, there's a similar bill with the difference of the funding source, which we have been talking about because the Senate is assuming that we can use the CARES Act resources and based on conversation with M and B and others, that is not feasible, but because they put an if in that policy, I think this is going to go directly to the floor. That's my assumption.
Mr. Travis, is that where we're supposed to send us? I'm sure you've talked to the CA over at Ways and Means.
Yeah, Mr. Chair and Representative Nor. After speaking with the Chair for Ways and Means, that this bill would actually need to be sent to Ways and Means because of its fiscal impact. Understanding it's not general fund money, but still funds being spent still need to be seen from the Ways and Means Committee.
One more stop for you, Mr. Nor. Why don't you go ahead and present your bill? I see you have five or six testifiers, so we'll try and get through that.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, again. I move House File 36 to be referred to the House Ways and Means Committee. And that's my motion, and I do have an amendment to Mr. Chair.
Okay, you want to put your amendment on to get the bill in the way you would prefer? Please explain, move your amendment and explain it.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is the same bill that we have had conversation in the previous session. This is about the secondary students or high school students who have been left out of their unemployment, basically because there is an ineligibility in the state statute, which we are trying, quite frankly, to rectify that issue. And we have received calls from many students. We have received calls from many young people who have been asking us to correct that issue. So the amendment that I have is it's going to allow 16-year-olds and older to apply for the regular unemployment and to receive the unemployment. So this is, Mr. Chair, this is a temporary eligibility. It's not a permanent eligibility. It starts during March 15th and goes all the way to December 26th. And I appreciate Senator Reric and Miller, who have introduced a similar bill to make the students whole again. Mr. Chair and members, I have received calls from many young people. And one of them, who is actually living with his grandparent, he was also a breadwinner for that family. When this, he applied for the unemployment, he wasn't eligible because he was 17 years old, and he wasn't able to get any additional resources. The place that he worked no longer provided him that employment. So he got stuck because he didn't get anything of the coronavirus or CARES Act money, the stimulus package that many people received because he was 17 years old. He didn't get any other benefit from the state or the federal government. He struggled for many days trying to figure out how he can pay his bills, support his grandmother in terms of making payment for rent and other utility bills. It hurts many individuals who have contributed to the UI simply because they have been excluded. Quite frankly, Mr. Chair and members, I do have many young people who want to testify on this issue so they can tell you their experiences. We also have the Commissioner for Deed, who will also testify and talk about this bill and see where we end up during this special session.
Thank you. So what is your amendment?
Mr. Chair, my amendment is A1, I'm assuming. Let me pull it up.
Chair, it's the DE1.
It's a DE amendment, Mr. Chair.
You've moved your amendment. Are there any questions to the amendment? Seeing all those in favor of the DE1 to get the bill in order and the order that the member would care to present the bill, please say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. The bill is in the shape that you would like it, Representative Nor. You've explained your bill. Would you like to move to your witnesses or your testifiers?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. If the Commissioner Groves can provide us an input on this bill, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Grove, welcome to the committee.
Mr. Chair, thank you. Members of the committee, appreciate the chance to share just some brief thoughts here because I do think the most compelling testifiers on this topic are the youth themselves who are facing these challenges as our economy is undergoing just an unprecedented amount of challenge. I think the core tenet of this whole bill is something that the governor, Lieutenant Governor, myself, all of us at Deed are really excited about, which is simply that if you're old enough to work, you should be old enough to get unemployment benefits when you can't work. And the law that prevents that from happening is from 1939. We as a state are way far behind so many of our neighbors and so many other states in this country who allow young people to access unemployment benefits in the same way, in the same level playing field as adults. So extending these benefits to people who are 16 and over just represents that it's very basic level of fairness issue. But as Representative Nor mentioned, it also represents an economic stability issue. You know, these aren't just kids with summer jobs for fun, right? Many of these students who need these unemployment benefits are primary or at least secondary breadwinners for their family. That money is going into food on the table, clothes on their backs, keeping those families sustained throughout really challenging times. And when they can't work, that's all the more challenging. I think it's all the more challenging as well because younger workers have been harder hit by this pandemic than any other age group. Individuals under 25 in our economy right now are applying for unemployment insurance at percentages that far outweigh the rest of the population. If you have a high school diploma or less in this state, for example, you are 50% likely to have applied for unemployment insurance at this point. One in two workers who have a high school diploma or less have applied for unemployment insurance. So not only is this a fairness issue, but there's an urgency to this because younger workers, because of the kinds of jobs that they work in and the jobs being put on pause or retracted, given our economic situation, you really need this benefit. So we're really eager to see this passed. We really commend Representative Nor for his leadership on this. He's been extremely thoughtful. We've had several conversations with him on the technicalities of this bill to get it into a place that makes sense. There is that difference with the Senate on funding source. The Senate bill, as Representative Nor mentioned, does pull from CARES Act funding. We don't believe that's the direction that we should go here. And just to put it into context, because, you know, we should be fiscally responsible of any decision like this. If you're expanding a benefit, you should know how much it's going to cost. We've done an estimation of this and, you know, it really depends a little bit on how it would land, but we estimate the cost on a basis of now through the end of December to be somewhere between $13 and $27 million. If you take the conservative estimate and say that it's going to be $27 million, that represents less than 1% of the unemployment insurance money that we will have dispersed by the end of this year if current trends continue. So we are not talking about a massive amount of money, a massive percentage increase in our costs. And again, we're really just getting on par with other states who've already recognized far earlier than we have that this benefit should just be accrued to any worker who qualifies for it in the same way as the rest of the population, even if they are under 18. So just wanted to again commend Representative Nor for this bill. We are in big favor of it, myself, Lieutenant Governor. The governor have all met with some of the young advocates that you'll hear from today and many of you have already heard from. They are passionate, they are thoughtful, they have organized a great effort here and have worked with Representative Nor to put together a great piece of legislation. So I just wanted to come into the hearing and share that perspective, let everyone know here that Deed is incredibly excited about this piece of legislation, and we urge this committee to pass it and for the Senate to do the same.
Thank you, Commissioner. I'm going to guess that you're looking to get off the call when you're done here. So I'm going to open it up for a few questions for you right now so that you can go on and help the state some more. It looks like Travis, I see Representative Robbins has got her hand up. Were there any others before?
Representative Sundin, I saw Representative Eklund, and then yes, Representative Robbins. That's who I have as potential questions.
Representative Sundin and Eklund and Robbins. Representative Sundin.
Thank you, Chair Mahoney. And I guess this question would be addressed best by the Commissioner, maybe the author. Actually, three little questions. If in fact we can qualify these students for unemployment insurance, would they qualify for any of the 600 federal? Is there back pay benefits for them? That's one question. I understand that the qualifying quarters to actually qualify for unemployment insurance goes back, it's a work history. I wonder how that affects people when they're 15 years old or how far back do we go? How do we do that? And how do we track that back? And then thirdly, the education restrictions for other people that are collecting unemployment insurance, they're restricted from collecting unemployment benefits when they're in school. That's my understanding. And we're kind of setting up a double standard here. So just some food for thought here. Can you address those three concerns?
Mr. Commissioner.
Mr. Chair, I might, just given the author wrote the bill, I might defer to Representative Nor on this if that's all right. It is his bill and those technical questions, I think, might be best answered by him.
I think it was.
Representative Nor.
If you look at the bill, we are trying to make sure that we ensure that the education component is included and also making sure that the students meet all the eligibility criteria before they get unemployment. So that is the safeguard that is already in there in order to ensure that 16-year-olds and 17-year-olds and 18-year-olds are included, but also meeting the eligibility requirement, which is set under the UI law. So that is already included in the bill. So we're not just taking the students for being a student and getting the income and also looking at the quota system, which you mentioned, which also includes in the, looking at the UI current law. If you look at the bill, that's exactly what we intend to do, Mr. Chair. Representative Sundin, I think that is our intention. That's what we want the department to look into.
Thank you, Representative Nor and Representative Sundin. Representative Eklund.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is for the Commissioner, I believe. So, Mr. Commissioner, thanks for coming on. And currently under the payroll deduction, then, do employers pay into the UI trust fund for high school age students?
Commissioner.
I have a follow-up.
You know, I'm going to, I, we brought some of our team on to answer some of the technical questions on this, but I would say that employers do pay in for these workers. And so therefore, the trust fund is set up to be able to pay them back. They're just not eligible to actually pull in those payments themselves.
Okay, and then, thank you, Commissioner. And that was my second question is if not, is there a mechanism in place? But it sounds like there is, so thank you.
Yep.
Representative Robbins.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, members. So I wondered if you could give us a little more specificity, Commissioner Grove or Representative Nor, about why you are saying that the federal CARES money could not be used for this rather than borrowing more from the federal unemployment trust fund loan program we have? And secondly, I'm concerned that this will incentivize students in the fall, especially if they're doing distance learning, to work more and be less attentive to their education. And we really don't want to provide incentives for students to not finish their high school education. So I'm just wondering how you can address that. Thank you.
Commissioner Grove.
Well, on your second question, Mr. Chair, Representative Robbins, I'm not sure I understand completely why a worker would be, a high school student would be incentivized to work rather than go to school in this scenario that you're outlining. Can you help me understand a little bit more your concern?
Representative Robbins.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, yes. So my understanding from the DE is that it says for any week the applicant is a student in attendance doing distance learning through or on vacation. So my understanding is if they are doing distance learning, they qualify, but they have a lot of flexibility with that. So they might be prioritizing increasing their work hours and then maybe not putting the quality time in on their education. And, you know, I'm a very strong advocate of making sure that our kids get a fantastic education and meet their benchmarks and get their high school diplomas and then whatever they choose beyond that. But I'm concerned that they will have an incentive to work more to, I'm sorry, I see, I'm just concerned that they work more than they would qualify for more, but I guess that's not working, sorry.
Yeah, I, well, I would just say this. High school students, as we all know, already work, right? They work in the summer and they work during the school year too. And so this is just simply making sure that if they are separated from work due to no fault of their own, that they can take advantage of the same benefits that the rest of us do. Their employers pay into it. This is true in almost every state. This is sort of an antiquated Minnesota law that could really activate a lot more funding for our young people, who many of whom are supporting their families. You know, the CARES Act just isn't the right funding source for this benefit. We want to put students in the same playing field as adults in this place. Their employers are already paying into that trust fund for them to take advantage of the benefit. The gymnastics required to make it a CARES Act funding source would be complex, onerous, and wouldn't really solve the problem we're trying to solve here. We're trying to get this benefit lined up so that it is, that is in line with the rest of the workforce. Trying to do some unique funding source in the CARES Act doesn't strike us as wise. It would be complex in terms of administration because it wouldn't go through the same UI system that exists. And so we strongly urge the committee to accept the bill as Nor has written it.
Mr. Chair.
Representative Robbins.
Thank you. Just to follow up on that, I would like a little more understanding of how much they're already paying in for these students. I checked with two employers in my district who hire a lot of high school students over the weekend, and they both said that they pay in for the hours that make 18-year-olds, the hours that would get them to an FTE equivalent. But their understanding of their own payroll is that they are not currently paying in for the younger employees. So could you qualify that for me?
Knowing unemployment law, Representative, Commissioner Grove, or one of the Deed people that you've got behind, close at hand, one of the Deed unemployment people that you've got close at hand, to explain that?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, Representative Robbins, that is incorrect. Employers pay into the unemployment insurance trust fund for every worker regardless of age.
And regardless of hours worked? Or does it have to accrue to a certain amount?
You have to accrue a certain number of hours to be eligible. Oh, sorry, Mr. Chair, apologize for that. Mr. Chair.
I've lost control of this committee so many times. I'm kind of used to it.
Sorry.
Mr. Chair, I'm sorry. It's in the context of Zoom, I lose the kind of.
I understand.
But I do apologize. The hourly requirements for workers to be eligible for unemployment insurance, as you know, is they have to have worked up to 3,000 hours in the previous year. So it's not as if everyone just can immediately access these benefits if you've worked a single day, right? That's the hourly requirement that is there. But in order to make the whole trust fund work, the employer has to pay into that system for every hour that's worked by an employee in their business. And so the pay-in does happen. The eligibility has to take into consideration how much you've already worked.
Commissioner, Representative Robbins, if I could jump in. Commissioner, how many hours did you say they need to be, to have work in order to be eligible?
So, Mr. Chair, Representative Robbins, my team should jump in here and correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe it's 3,000 hours in the previous year.
No, that's entirely wrong. I know that. Your team needs to jump in on that one.
Okay.
Who would you like to call on?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Darryl Danan, can you chime in for us as our legislative director?
Hey, folks, can you hear me?
Good to see you. Go right ahead.
Hi, Mr. Chair. For the committee, I'm Darryl Danan. I'm the Government Relations Director at Deed. So I'll just jump in and actually say, I'm not sure if the memo got circulated to members yet, but our UI team put together a pretty thorough memo for you that kind of walks through the different components of sort of how the UI tax works, how we pay out benefits for the committee. If Travis hasn't had the chance to circulate that to you, I think that will answer a lot of your questions and kind of walk through some of the technical tax components. Does that, I don't know if Travis wants to jump in and share if he's circulated that with the committee yet, but we did, I think, share that with Travis maybe yesterday.
So did you have an hour, an hours minimum? And if that's a no, I think it's 300 hours.
It is 300 hours, Chair.
I added a zero, I apologize.
It's okay, yeah.
I see no one else.
And it is written in writing in that memo to you, which I thought might help members. I'm sorry, Chair.
That's okay. Seeing no other questions for the Commissioner, let's get to the other testifiers.
Mr. Chair, sorry, Representative Koznick is also on the list.
Representative Koznick.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Grove, thank you for being here. I was kind of working on some of those questions too that Representative Robbins asked about the CARES funding. I think there's room to have further discussion there because I didn't hear, in my opinion, a substantial objection other than it's complicated in gymnastics there. But I was wondering, you know, to kind of maybe to bridge the gap between some of the objections here and what the Senate is posing. Is there, or are there, or is there a way that we can maybe adjust the eligibility modifications so that we can help those that are maybe primary income? If they're this young, it's unfortunate if they are for their family or the secondary income and not just the summer job. To the discussion that we just had, I was glad to hear that it was 300 hours instead of 3,000 because that's almost 60 hours a week. 300 hours is just under 600 hours, or excuse me, six hours a week. So it's not real substantial. So maybe there's room there, Commissioner, to adjust the eligibility requirement so we can target those students that we've heard in the past and I presume will hear shortly, that are really relying on the income. Six hours a week really isn't, I have a hard time believing that that's gonna, you're going to shoot too wide and not be as narrow focused on those students that really rely on the income and they've lost their job. So, you know, maybe students that are working 15 hours a week or 20 hours a week would be a good compromise. What are your thoughts on that, adjusting the eligibility requirements?
Commissioner.
Mr. Chair, Representative Koznick, we wholeheartedly support the bill as Representative Nor has written it. We believe that these benefits should go to high school students who have, whose employers have paid into the system and who should have the same level playing field as any adult. Why should we make it harder for a young person to get unemployment insurance than we should for an adult? When they, an hour work by a young person should be as good as an hour work by anybody. So our perspective is that it should be applied universally the same. And this is what happens in so many other states. Again, we're operating under a pretty antiquated system here in Minnesota, and this bill would update that at exactly the right time when our young people need it most. So appreciate the creativity. I guess just from our perspective, we think Nor has gotten it right with this language and would urge the committee to pass it as written.
Representative Koznick, do you have a follow-up?
No, we'll wait until the end of the testimony, but I appreciate the Commissioner's comments.
Thank you, Commissioner Grove. I'm going to call Matt Norris, Policy Director for Youth Prize.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the committee. My name is Matt Norris, and I'm the Policy Director at Youth Prize, where our mission is to increase equity within for Minnesota's indigenous, low-income, and racially diverse youth. As part of that mission, we've been working on coordinating a coalition called the Don't Forget Us Campaign that's urging lawmakers to address the fact that, as we've discussed this morning, Minnesota high school students have been left out of our state's response to the historic rates of unemployment caused by the COVID-19 pandemic. The fact that high school students are currently ineligible for unemployment benefits in this state disproportionately impacts Minnesota's youth of color and indigenous youth, as well as youth from immigrant families and low-income students. Employers pay into the UI system for high school students like any other worker. So there shouldn't be different rules for high school students from any other worker. This issue is before you today because of the inspiring hard work of several youth leaders of the Don't Forget Us Campaign, who have made it their mission to find a way to ensure that high school students left unemployed because of COVID-19 have access to the assistance that other workers are entitled to. Their stories have been featured throughout the media, CARE 11, The Star Tribune, The Pioneer Press, and even The New York Times. This work has been the byproduct of youth-adult partnership, with the young people blazing the trail and adult representatives from a number of youth-focused organizations throughout the state providing support. In fact, we shared with you this morning a letter of support that was signed by nearly 60 organizations from across the state. These efforts have brought us to this point. The precipice of getting a bill passed to provide unemployment assistance these students have been waiting for since March. The coalition has been actively working with members of the House, the Senate, and the administration to try to find bill language and a funding mechanism that's going to work for all parties. And we really want to thank Representative Nor for his leadership on this issue today. Compared to what is being paid out of the UI trust fund right now, as Commissioner Grove indicated, this just isn't a huge lift. An estimated $13.7 to $27.9 million over the entire 42-week period that the youth would be eligible. For reference, Deed reported that they're currently paying out about $140 to $150 million per week. And as Commissioner Grove indicated, that means that these benefits would be a fraction of 1% of the benefits paid out from March through December. Because of this, we urge lawmakers to come together to pass this bill and make it possible for these students to get the unemployment assistance that for many of them is really about survival. We don't have time to wait for another special session. We've explored all kinds of various options. The time to get this bill done for Minnesota's young workers is now. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Norris. Lincoln Bacall, co-youth leader, Don't Forget Us Campaign.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good morning, my name is Lincoln Bacall. I'm 17 years old and I just graduated from high school a long ago. I am one of the founders and I run Twin Cities Changemakers, which is a youth advocacy and empowerment organization that ensures that decisions are not made that impact youth without youth at the table, which is why I'm here and involved in this campaign and testifying for y'all. I lost my job because of COVID-19 back in March, and I'm now taking a gap year. I deferred in order to work a lot more and save up more money for college. I've been working since I was 14 and, you know, paying my taxes, contributing to the economy. And so when my employer was like, you should apply for unemployment benefits, I did. And I was honestly kind of shocked that when I received a letter in the mail that said I wasn't eligible. So I've been working on this campaign ever since I received that letter in April. And more and more, as I work on it, my peers have been reaching out to me and saying, you know, I'm really struggling right now, I could really use this money. I've spoken to a 20-year-old high school student who is completely financially independent and unable to receive any benefits. You know, just so many of my friends are like really struggling right now. And the fact is, this is a matter of survival. High schoolers who work and who work enough to meet these unemployment eligibility requirements are not working because they want to spend their money on frivolous things and they're not applying for unemployment benefits because they want to spend their benefits on frivolous things. The people who are applying for benefits are the people who are working for their survival and who are working to pay rents, utilities, food for themselves and for their families. Like, this is the reality of Minnesota high school students and working Minnesota high school students. We don't want to put young people in a situation where they have to decide whether or not they're going to drop out of high school to become eligible for these benefits or stay in high school and maybe not be able to pay rent or not be able to buy food. That's not a position or a decision that any high schooler should have to make. You know, we're the future, we're the future. we're the future of this state and of this country, so young people really deserve to be supported right now through the pandemic in the same way that everyone else is being supported. And, you know, there's a lot of students like me who need this money in order to afford a higher education, in order to afford to go to college. So that's the reality of this situation. And, you know, it's just this, people are suffering right now. And I really, really hope that we're able to pass this bill now because, you know, a lot of young people have been waiting a very long time to receive this money. And I know that, you know, since the pandemic started, I have friends who have become homeless. I have friends who have, you know, gone through all sorts of financial instability and struggles because of the position that the pandemic put them in. And I know, just like any of the adults in the state, they deserve to be supported by the state, and they deserve to be taken care of. So thank you so much for the opportunity to testify, and I really hope that this is a priority for y'all, and this is something that we can pass now in order to equitably support the young people in this state. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Bacall. Please stick around, and I'm hoping that Mr. Norris can stick around in case there's questions. I'm gonna go to Cole Stephens, the co-leader of the Don't Forget Us Campaign.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and members of the committee. So, my name is Cole.
Please identify yourself for the tape and proceed.
Absolutely. My name is Cole Stephens. I live in Bloomington, Minnesota, and I am 18 years of age. I graduated Roosevelt High School in May of this year, and I've been working to help support me and my dad for about two years now. So that means that I helped for rent, utilities, internet, phone, groceries. And during the school year, I worked an average of 25 to 30 hours per week in food service. And I've also been a freelancer since middle school. So that involves fixing computers, fixing bikes, editing video, doing audio production. And in March, the coffee shop I was working at closed permanently because of the pandemic, pandemic and subsequent lockdown. At my boss's encouragement, I applied to Deed for benefits. To my frustration, I was technically moved with the amount of $0 with no explanation. And this went on for about four weeks, and then Deed actually, after the four weeks was up, sent me the back pay for those weeks I had requested, total of $3,714, $1,314 for state UI, $2,400 for the federal boost money. And by this time, my dad and I desperately needed to get back on our feet, and so I right away spent that money on rents and other bills. So when I received, my plans for the rest of the money was to launch my audio production business and to help my dad out of credit card debt. But about a week after I received the money, I actually received a letter from Deed demanding to pay the full amount back because I had received the money during a period, which was my like last couple months of high school. So, you know, I was ineligible, right? So instead of being able to help my dad out of credit card debt, now both of us are in debt. And actually, right after I graduated high school and then became eligible as a result of that, I actually started working right after that. So I've been unable to collect benefits because of that as well. And my job is I disinfect commercial buildings from the COVID-19 virus and other biological hazards. I do fire, water damage, mold ceiling. So as you can see, I'm not just some lazy teenager trying to maximize his welfare here. You know, I needed that money back then when I was in high school, and I wasn't able to get it. And I'm still working, choosing to work instead of sitting around at home collecting unemployment benefits, even faced with the reality that a lot of those long 12-hour days that I'm working could just be going to pay back Deed unless we can get this bill passed so that we can support our hard-working youth all across Minnesota. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Stephens. Please stick around in case there's questions. Melissa Heising.
Good morning.
Oh, my bad.
All right. Good morning, Mr. Chair and members of the committee. My name is Melissa Heising, and I'm Legislative Director for the Minnesota AFL-CIO, the state's labor federation of more than 1,000 local unions who represent more than 300,000 working people throughout our state. Our mission is to improve the lives of working people, to bring economic justice to the workplace and social justice to our state and the nation. I'm here in support of House File 36. This committee has heard compelling testimony from students in a variety of circumstances who are supporting themselves, supporting their families, and/or taking PSCE courses, which means in effect they're working their way through college. Students are more likely to work in industries that were devastated by the pandemic, like food service and retail. And younger workers have been the hardest-hit age group. According to unemployment data from Deed, unemployment claims by workers under age 22 rose 2,755% from 2019 to 2020, which is at least double, triple, or quadruple the percent increase compared to any other age group. We are living in a time of record inequality and economic hardship. Secondary students should have the same access to this vital social insurance program as any other worker. Please support working students in Minnesota and vote in favor of House File 36. Thank you.
Thank you. Members, we're well past the 30 minutes that I tried to accommodate for each bill today. So keep your questions for the testifiers brief if you can. Are there any questions for the testifiers?
Chair, we had Representative Moran reach out for a question.
Representative Moran, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I just want to first say, I want to thank Representative Nor for bringing this bill forward and supporting our young people. I do believe that, you know, if we have young people, whether they're students or youth, or how we decide to see them, that if they are working, they are working because they need to work. Whether they're helping their families, whether they're trying to support themselves, or to, whatever that may be, they are doing it. And so they need to be able to be in a pool that can receive unemployment, especially during a time of the pandemic. And so I just wanted to first show my support for the bill that Representative Nor had brought forth, but also to the students who have decided that school was important to them, but also being a part of the workforce was not only important but a necessity to do so. As a young youth myself, I started working at 13 years old and worked throughout my teens because I knew I had to also support my family and be of support that was also having to take care of myself. And so it is long overdue, long overdue. And, you know, I'm always surprised about who we decide is worthy of something and who is not worthy of something. And so I hope we can remove ourselves from that type of mindset and allow these young students to get the unemployment that I believe that they so deserve and need, especially during this time in a pandemic. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Representative Moran. Are there any other questions? Representative Koznick has his hands up. Let's go with Representative Koznick.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. For either of the testifiers, what would be an average amount of hours worked in the summer if you didn't work during the school?
This summer, my plan was to work 40 hours a week. Last summer, I worked 40 hours a week, and the summer before that, I worked about 40 hours a week. So that's like my expectation to be able to, be able to complete that number of hours. And that's one of the main reasons that I'm deferring is because I was counting on being able to work that much during the summer. And now I've been unable to find a job that is like safe for me and my family.
Okay, thank you. So I guess it would be, you know, 12 months in the summer, if you did actually work 40 hours, that's very ambitious. That'd be like 480 hours worked in that year. I think the compromise here to the committee is adjusting the eligibility of the previous hours worked so that we can target the students that are helping their families that really are relying on the income for survival, like Representative Moran had said, rather than, you know, kids that might have a summer job, and if they don't have one, so be it. You know, maybe, you know, just working a little bit to get started in the workforce, but not really, their family isn't relying on it. And then we can help more people and also preserve the trust fund or the funds that we, if we use a different source, or the whole variety of families in the population that have really paid into it over a more significant amount of time. So I would encourage the author, Representative Nor, to take a look at, maybe that would be a good compromise that would help you bridge the gap over in the Senate. Thank you.
Representative Jay Zong.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Representative Nor, for bringing this bill forward. I can't help but think when I was a 16-year-old, working while I was still a student. And my parents came to this country as refugee immigrants. I was born and raised here in public housing at the Rondo neighborhood, just a stone's throw away from the Capitol. It brings me joy to hear that we have such a program, that we will be pushing for such policy here. And so I appreciate what you're doing, Representative Nor, because I can't imagine, had I been a 16-year-old during a pandemic like this back then, where my family would be. I was supporting my siblings and my family. Both of my parents were working full-time. My grandmother didn't speak English, so she couldn't work. And I was a source of income for my family. So this means a lot to me. I really appreciate this, and I urge all members to support Representative Nor in passing this bill out of committee. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
There, I don't see any other questions. So with that, I will add these comments. I've taken advantage of unemployment as a construction worker for my whole career. It wasn't open to me to take advantage of it during high school when I was laid off a couple, because of a fire at one of the places that I worked. I don't see any reason to treat these you any different than someone who has worked 20 years in the construction field or any place else. As a matter of fact, one of the things that irritates me is that we can't cover the school workers, the cafeteria workers, the bus drivers, and the variety of others. If you've worked, you should get unemployment. And whether you've been working for six months or 60 years, it shouldn't make a difference. This bill only goes till December the first of the year, from March to the first of the year. It's a temporary fix. Next year, I hope the unemployment compensation, whatever their advisory committee, that's it, takes this bill up before, not between now and November, or at least December, I should say, and wholeheartedly supports extending unemployment benefits to 16-year-olds. I have some concern with getting it any further, but I'll leave that up to them and their recommendations, and actually get their recommendations back to the Capitol ASAP in January, so that this bill can be taken up and make it permanently. If you work after the age of 16 and are laid off, you are eligible for UI benefits. You have to work 300 and a couple odd hours to get to in your, in the quarter that you're claiming. So with that, members, we will take, I will let the bill author have the final word, and then we'll take a roll call. Representative Nor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and members. The youth have spoken. They have told us not to forget them. So in listening to them, the rules were changed on them. The rules were not fair, how they're written right now. Mr. Chair and members, this bill is just a temporary way to level the playing field for the students. They need us now, more than ever before. The pandemic has had impact on many youth, and they've called us for many, many times. You have seen the support coming from many individuals on this issue. Members, I urge you to support this bill. I will work with our Senate colleagues to get it done. This is the moment that we need to step up. With that, Mr. Chair, I would like to renew my motion, House File 36, to be re-refired to Ways and Means Committee as amended.
The clerk will take the roll. Sheriff Mahoney.
Aye.
Representative Nor.
Aye.
Representative Gunther.
Nay.
Representative Backer.
No.
Representative Baker. Representative Cloughlin. Representative Davney. Representative Eklund.
Eklund, aye.
Representative Haley.
Nay.
Representative Hassan.
Hassan, aye.
Representative Kegel.
Kegel, aye.
Representative Koznick.
No.
Representative Mecklen.
No.
Representative Moran.
Aye.
Representative Robbins.
No.
Representative Stevenson. Representative Sundin.
Aye.
Representative, Representative Jong.
Aye.
Representative Baker. I have nine yeses, six nos. Thank you, Mr. Moran. Representative Nor, you're on your way to Ways and Means. Thank you.